Good evening and welcome to the Chapcor Central School District Board of Education meeting, public meeting this evening, November 14th, 2018. We've been in executive session discussing personnel issues. Do I have a motion to raise back the public session?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can we please stand to have a pledge allegiance led by Jane Shepherdson?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First of all, it's nice to have a crowd at the board meetings. Usually we have our friendly PTA people who are here all night long with us, but it's nice to see a lot of students and parents. And thank you for the students for coming tonight to be with your principals and to share what you're doing with us, because this is something we think very highly about. We really like when you guys come here. So if you think it's interesting, you can come back. So for the president's report, I only have three quick things to say. One, last week, we had Dr. Ackerman brought Mark Brackett, who's a psychologist from Yale, and he has, he's studying social and emotional intelligence and learning, and he has a, I guess, theory called Ruler. And he met with each of the teachers, I guess, the entire district, correct?
All of the teachers who weren't involved in parent conferences at Yale Elementary School.
Right, okay, so middle schools and the high school. Second, I'd like to thank the administration for working diligently to continue filling administration openings we have in the district. So I'd like to thank the administrators. But I also like to thank the building principals who participated, the teachers who participated, fellow board members who participated, as well as, we had a couple of students from one of our middle schools participate, and they were, their insight was great. So I'd like to publicly thank them also. And the last thing I'd like to talk about is Chapcor PTA has a fundraiser for Bell School, Chapcor Craft and Gift, and it's on this Saturday from 10 to 4, correct? Okay, so that's it. Thank you very much.
Okay, what an exciting night. We have our West Orchard students here, and they're going to present, but before we do that, I'm so excited. We're going to start our meeting by recommending our new principal of Seven Bridges Middle School to the Board of Education for appointment. And I'm so happy to share that after an extensive process with an independent search firm, that Dr. Joe Mazza, who is here tonight, will be recommended to you to begin on December 10th. So at this time, I'd like to invite our Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources and Leadership, Dr. Tony Sinanis, to introduce Dr. Mazza to the Board of Education and the community.
Thank you so much, Dr. Ackerman. Thank you, everyone. Good evening. Thank you to the Board of Ed for being here tonight, and we are excited about this appointment. So as Christine mentioned, we are going to be recommending Dr. Joe Mazza for appointment as the new probationary principal of Seven Bridges Middle School. So this process started, it seems like, I don't know, years ago at this point, because we started the search in the summer. From almost the first day that I started, we were involved in the search process. We went through various rounds of interviews. There were writing tasks, there were site visits here in Seven Bridges, there were site visits in Philadelphia. We had a chance to visit Joe's school, where he was a tenured elementary principal, and University of Pennsylvania. And Joe is here with his family, which makes tonight even more amazing, with his four beautiful kids and his mom and mother, his wife and mother-in-law, sorry. So thank you all for being here. So Dr. Mazza is currently the, and I feel the same way. Usually what I sound like at about 9:30, so.
Mickey's a great sense of fashion.
He gets it. Yes, the fashion is what we're talking, and the socks, everything. All right. So Dr. Mazza currently serves as the Leadership Innovation Manager at the University of Pennsylvania at the Graduate School of Education, but before that, he's had 19 years of service in the field of education. He's been a third grade teacher. He worked as an elementary school assistant principal, as the vice principal of the middle school in the Illinois, state of Illinois, and he then moved to Pennsylvania, where he was a tenured principal at Nap Elementary. Joe is a published author. He has written on topics including everything from family engagement to empathy and innovation. He has written for Edutopia, for the Principal Magazine, for Education Week, for Harvard Education Letter. He is someone who feels really passionate about sharing his work, his thoughts, his beliefs. He is a learner first, a thinker, an educator, and really embodies this notion of lifelong learner. I've had the privilege of not only getting to know him through this process, but professionally through our work at Penn. Joe actually served on my dissertation committee when I did my work, and I had a chance to learn from him in that, and gotten to know him even better through this process. He is passionate, he is dedicated, and he is super excited to be joining us in the capacity of principal at Seven Bridges Middle School, and it's going to be an honor and privilege to work with you, Joe, because not only do I know that we're going to be able to collaborate, but I know I'm going to be able to learn from you, and that's not an opportunity you get every day. So thank you, and so.
Right, so I just would like, if the Board could consider moving 4.1, the probationary appointment for Dr. Mazza up on the agenda, to consider acting on that now. I couldn't be happier to recommend a principal for appointment than I am for our Seven Bridges community tonight.
So we're going to take all 4.1?
Oh, yeah, we could do that. Okay, so I would recommend 4.1 instructional as presented, including Dr. Joseph Mazza's recommendation for probationary appointment to begin on December 10th.
Do I have a motion to accept that recommendation?
I'll move to accept the recommendation of 4.1 instructional.
I will second.
Any discussion? Congratulations. All in favor?
Congratulations.
All right. Congratulations.
So we are so lucky that we have many of your future students here in the audience who's in fourth grade. West Orchard goes to Seven Bridges, so this will be your principal next year. I know we have a lot of fourth graders here, so now you get to see him firsthand on his first night in the district, so. Joe, please.
Thank you very much. And I'm looking forward to seeing you and working with all of you and visiting your school in a couple of months. First of all, when I learned about this district, I knew there was not a comparison in terms of the districts that I've been at. I've been in over 100 schools in the United States internationally, and we really are focused on the right things. That's relationships first, but in terms of innovation, I don't know that there's another place that is as focused as we are, and starting with empathy. So I'm really excited to build relationships with the students, leadership, my new partner in crime over here, Mrs. Mangier, and, you know, the Seven Bridges School, we're going to visit tomorrow as a family, and that sounds a little scary, you know. But it's exciting. I was there last week, and, you know, I'm just super excited. I wish I was starting tomorrow. We've got to sell a house, find a place to live, so that's impossible, but I'm just super excited. Everyone I've met has really been a, just a breath of fresh air, and, you know, including the parents that I'm excited to work with as well. I want to thank my family, my wife, who's been a rock through all of this, coming back and forth to New York, my mother-in-law, who's out chasing twins out there, my son Mark, Molly, Keely, and Mick is out there with the squeaky shoes. We're super excited. We can't wait to get here, and I look forward to getting to know all of you in lots of different ways, and challenging some students and doing some really amazing things, both nationally and internationally. So thank you very much.
It's great. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
I know that Joe needs to probably exit with everybody, so he will be in Seven Bridges tomorrow at about 9:30, so we look forward to welcoming him and his whole family to our school tomorrow.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome. Okay, so maybe we could just transition a little bit. We're going to have West Orchard go in terms of preparing for their presentation, so you guys could get ready, and I just want to grab Joe one more time.
I love that. I just want to grab those kids and eat them up. They're so yummy.
No, they're so cute.
They're so, oh, yes, they're so cute. They look like quadruplets here. They're adorable.
I couldn't figure which ones were the twins, but now I can understand.
The one with the black eye and then the girl who's sitting in this microphone guy.
I wish that my kids could have this. Ooh.
You know, his mother showed me a picture of her having twelve. She was a cheerleader. Mother, yeah, the dog, his wife. I was asking, I asked the boys.
No, I love it. I miss it, right. We got all the old kids. We want the little ones back. It's great. I love them. It's great.
Fond memories.
Fun, I love it.
Wrangling my three children.
Yes, exactly.
Okay, so, so tonight will be the first of six presentations led by our students to highlight the good work happening throughout our district, and I had asked the principals this year to allow our kids to actually lead our presentation, which I think will be excellent for us, as they talk about different aspects of our program, which we allowed some latitude in what they would choose to share under their principal's direction. So thank you, Principal Scoog, for gathering everyone together and having them come tonight, so we appreciate that.
Thank you, Dr. Ackerman, the Board of Education. We're so happy to be here. We have what will hopefully be an informative presentation about some of what we're working on at West Orchard School. To my right, we have four fourth graders who will share with you some of the personalized learning related to technology and to some of the furnishings, the innovative furnishings we have at the school, and the way in which they prefer to learn best. And then after the fourth graders, we have nine third graders who are going to come up with, under the leadership of Ms. Stover, to talk about social, emotional learning at West Orchard and what we're doing in that area. So if you look up on the screen, we have three focus areas this year. Tonight, we'll be talking about the first two primarily. We're also focusing on innovative learning spaces at West Orchard. And one of our teachers took a survey, which we're going to expand to all the fourth grades around student learning preferences and personalized learning. So I'm going to turn this over to Gigi, who's going to share some interesting information with you on how our fourth graders, what learning preferences they have this year. So Gigi.
Thank you for having us here. I'm really excited to share this information. I'll be sharing the results of the survey Ms. Keely gave the whole class to fill out. The first question is, what type of learner are you? Most of the class said that they are a hands-on learner, and I agree. Three people said that they are a visual learner. They like to see what they're learning. And two people said that they are a combination of visual auditory.
Okay, remember to wank, so I advanced the slide, remember?
When writing notes, drafts, and published pieces, is it easier for you to type your work or write it using a pencil and paper? One person said that they would rather do it with a pencil and paper, and the whole rest of the class said that they like to type their writing. The next question is, when typing your work, is it easier for you to type the words or speak into the computer and dictate? Eleven people said that it's easier for them to type their work, and five people said that either way works for them. The next question is, when editing your writing, would you rather have someone put comments on the document or have them write comments on a printed copy? Most of the class said that they would like to have someone put comments on the document. I agree too. And one person said that they like to have, they like the comments written on a printed When reading nonfiction information on the iPad, would you rather take notes in a notebook or type notes on the iPad? Most of the class said that they like to type notes on the iPad, and five people said that it does not matter to them. When reading nonfiction information or a story, would you rather read on the iPad or read it on an actual book or on a sheet of paper? Most of the class likes to read on the iPad, and I agree too. Three people like to read an actual book or on a sheet, and six people do not care. The last question is, what materials and furniture in the commons or in the classroom best fit your learning style? A lot of people said that they like high chairs and wiggly chairs in the ottomans in the classrooms or in the commons. I agreed the person who said that they like a small and closed, quiet place, because it's hard for me to work when everyone's talking around me. We really enjoyed taking the survey and having these different tools to help our learning styles. This proves a lot of the kids in the class really like the digital tools, and I agree. And that concludes the results of the survey.
Thank you, Gigi.
This is called Padlet. You make a Padlet and share it with the group. For this Padlet, you can, for this Padlet, we, for, you can post your ideas and thoughts. For this Padlet, we finished a book called Fourth Grade Rats. We shared our ideas on this Padlet. The pink post showed the evidence from the book, from the book, and the blue post showed the life lesson. This is a great tool, because we can see what others thinking and add to it. Some kids, this is called Seesaw. Some, like, when we do our work and we're using a whiteboard, or for this student, they use place value chips on a paper, on a piece, and they divided it up. Here's a video.
As you can see, we have a math problem here. It is 1,256 times 4. The setup of the chart with all of our place value chips on it is what it would look like before you solve it. So in the ones column, we have four groups of six. Six ones are in each stack, and we have four rows of them. And six times four equals 24, so we carried, oh, and as you can see, there's a piece of paper in the corner right next to the thousands, and that's how we solved it. So as you can see, we carried the 20 into the five times, 50 times four.
So we're not going to play the whole video, but the illustration is that students are able to take photos of their work, write the problem, use manipulatives, and then record their voice. So that was just a short example there. Addison?
Some kids like to use whiteboards, and some kids don't. These two students like to use whiteboards. If you do it, then you erase all your work, and you can't prove that you did it. So Seesaw can help you. You take a picture on the iPad, and then you save it to camera, and then you can upload it to Seesaw, so your teacher can see that you did the work.
Yeah, just pull that closer, Goldie.
Sometimes the math book doesn't make as much sense as our teacher teaches it to us, but on Seesaw, she can personalize the projects that we do, and the assignments make much more sense. After we, after we do the assignment, we can post it, and everybody can see each other's For one of our projects, based off the book Tiger Rising, we were assigned to make an object that explains one of the characters' feelings without using words. We went to the, we went to the Global Learning Space to do this. Me and my partner made what you are looking at right now. All the pairs took a picture of their creation and posted it on Seesaw. This way, we could all see each other's thinking and work. For me, it helps a lot.
This is Dreambox. Dreambox is a math learning app which teaches students about math and how to learn math strategies. When we finish our math lesson in class, we can log on to Dreambox, and we can also do it at home. When we log onto Dreambox, there's a screen, and this screen is different for everyone because it is based on what you've done so far. When you finish a lesson, the lesson goes away, and another one appears to focus on a different concept. Here are a few lessons I've done so far. This is my account on Dreambox, and as you can see, there are multiple lessons. I've done part of them at least once. When, when you click, my favorite one is the whole number and addition strategies, and when you click on it, you get this. What, um, would show, the guide, the few information under the guide shows some fun additional information. In the middle, it shows a simple way to do multiplication, and the buckets show a visual representation of how to subtract and add. The animated characters over there make the work a lot of fun, and under the yellow guy, Captain Compensation, if you click on his buckets, it shows a broken-down version of a problem in steps. The stars over there show a way to make, show how much progress you've made in the entire program, and the green bar over there shows how much you've completed in the lesson. This is part of the multiplication and doubling lesson. As you can see, there's a visual representation on the number line to show how you multiply. And in conclusion, I love using Dreambox.
Thank you, Sok and Goldie. You have a few more things you wanted to add we left off.
I would like to share my opinion on technology. Sometimes technology helps me, and sometimes it doesn't. For example, I would rather read a paper book than read a book on Epic on iPad. When I'm reading a real book, I feel like I can read for much longer than if I were on the iPad staring at a screen. I like making things on Seesaw and Google Docs. Seesaw helps me because it helps me with my thinking, and I can look at other people's thinking too.
So that's our fourth grade group on personalized learning and technology. Do you want to have questions now for this group and call the other group up, or do this all at once? It's up to you.
I think if, I think it would be helpful if you had questions to ask the fourth grade group, we probably would do it now.
So you're going to get some questions. We talked about this. The only, it's not really a question, but a comment, and maybe it could be a question or something like a, I don't want to give you guys more work, because they only have a lot of work, but it might be interesting, especially Gigi. You took your survey and gave it to the parents of the kids in your class to see how they answered those questions, just to see how technology, the way you use technology and the way your parents use technology. So that might be just like a follow-up idea, because I know I couldn't, I don't use technology the way you do, especially some of those questions. I answer them all differently, so. Mostly paper and pencil. Any others?
I'm actually fascinated that you don't have any notes.
I know.
You spoke perfectly. You memorized it, or you just know it.
I memorized everything.
Very good, very impressive. Not to say that there's nothing wrong with taking notes, believe me, but that was impressive.
Thank you.
So I guess I would ask, as we introduce all this new technology, we just want to make sure that we don't introduce too much of it to take away some of the things we had before technology that are also really good. And so I just want to find out from you guys how you think this is all going. You know, you're getting new iPads, new devices, and new ways of doing your work, and do you think that, like you were saying before, that you like reading paper books better than reading on an iPad? I agree too, but some people like reading on an iPad. So I just want to know, is everyone, do you think that everyone is getting what they need with all the technology coming in? Are you getting enough of the new technology, and are you still getting enough of a chance to do things in the old way? What do you think?
I think we have enough technology to see that we're not going fully overboard with it, and enough regular paper and pencil to see that we aren't going to be, like, really primitive.
Um, yeah, I agree. I like, I like to do, instead of, because we're doing nonfiction, and I like to, like, write down my notes on the iPad instead of doing the notebook, but I still feel like we're on the same level of using pencil and paper and the iPad.
Okay, thank you.
Do you find, do you find it easy to focus on the technology and yet still collaborate with each other, that you could find that balanced well, that people aren't distracted, that they're able to use all the new technology and yet still interact really well, like with your fellow students? How do you feel about that?
Yeah, so I think that we can do that.
Addison, Goldie, what's that?
Well, that was just an absolutely excellent presentation, fourth grade. I'm so proud, and I was so grateful that you were there. So we're going to transition to third grade now?
Yeah.
Your parents should be very proud of you.
Nice job, everyone.
Third grade is in uniform.
I love it.
Wow.
Super. Lots of smiles. I love that. I should have seen that, yes. I know. Fun. So as part of my entry into the new role as assistant principal at West Orchard, I had the wonderful opportunity to have a lot of interviews over the summer with faculty and staff, and one of the common themes that emerged from those conversations was that we are truly a school community that is committed to educating the whole child, and that there was a desire for a clearly communicated set of values, a question of who we are as a school community. And from that, Jim and I, along with our school psychologist, Rosa Amendola, we spent a lot of time examining exactly what do we want to nurture in our students as far as their character traits, and how we could communicate that in a very age-appropriate and concise way, and most importantly, how could we take that and weave it into the fabric of our school culture? And from those conversations and reflections was born the West Orchard Promise, which some of our third graders are here to speak to you about this evening. So the West Orchard Promise is?
Be kind. Be open-minded. And be safe.
So what have we done so far to nurture a community of caring?
My name is Aleah, and I'm going to tell you about some things we have done so far to make our community a better place. The first thing is school-wide read-alouds. The first week of school, Ms. Stover went to every classroom and read the book All Are Welcome. She gave the message that everyone has a place here at West Orchard. During the month of November, she is reading books about kindness to all of the classes, and each class is making a bumper sticker with the message about kindness. The second thing is assemblies. In September, we had a welcome-back assembly, where we learned about the West Orchard Promise. We also had an assembly about lunch and recess. We made posters showing how we can be kind, open-minded, and safe. At these times, at these times, in October, we had a kindness assembly. Mrs. Aunt Amendola taught us the stop, walk, and talk strategy, and Ms. Stover made a video of kids and adults caught being kind. We also had a bus safety assembly and got stickers from the PTA to show that we promised to keep the promise on the bus. The last thing is the Caught Being Kind board. Inside of, outside of the Global Learning Center Commons, we have a board where we can post stories or pictures of people being kind. For example, For example, I shared that my classmate Molina helped me to pick up thumbtacks when I dropped them in library.
Hi, I'm Isabel Schlinger and I'm going to tell you about four ways that we have been kind at school. The first way is for morning announcements. We changed Mamma Mia Mondays to Mix It Up Mondays. We changed the theme because we wanted to add a little kindness to our school. The next way we've been kind is doing Thumbs Up Thursday. Thumbs Up Thursday used to be about pointing people, famous people that did good things around the country. And now it's about students who did good things that were noticed by the teachers. The next way is called Lunch Bunch. Now Lunch Bunch, you go sign up to, go to Mrs. Amendola's office and talk about ways to be kind. And you make cool kindness projects. The last way we've been kind is we do Start With Hello Week. Start With Hello Week is on the third week of school and you wear a name tag and say hello to anybody you see in the hallways or in the class, whether you know them or not. So maybe the new kids feel more welcome.
So what are some things that we're thinking about doing next?
Hello, my name is Alexis Shaken and I'm going to tell you about what we're doing next. Assemblies, open minus and safety. We will also have more assemblies about open minus and safety. In the assemblies, we will learn about the West Orchard Promise. We will also celebrate why we should be safe and open-minded. Read Alouds, we will also have more Read Alouds. Read Alouds are when Mrs. Silver comes into your, our classrooms and reads books to us about the West Orchard Promise. Make, Make A Difference Group. Some fourth graders started a group called Make A Difference Group. This group is going around the school showing everyone strategies if someone is being unkind or if they are having problems.
Hi, I'm Margot. Peer mediation. Peer mediation is an initiative for students to work out their problems that a couple of fourth graders are being taught. Instead of always going to Mrs. Amendola for their problems, students are going to these fourth graders. Students create activities for the word of the month. Every month there is a word. The word is always kind and respectful. This word of the month is gratitude. But me, my friends thought we didn't use the word of the month that much. So we decided to make an activity out of this. This is an optional activity that we are going to make up. And I'll, and I'll, and we'll give it to teachers so kids can try. Buddy benches. The buddy bench is a place where you can sit when you don't have anyone to play with. And if you see someone there, you should ask, do you want to play? If you do that, you use the West Orchard Promise. But some people weren't using the buddy bench when they were supposed to. So we are planning on giving lessons to other classes.
And what has the impact been so far?
Good teamwork, girls.
Yes, we got it.
Use that one on the table. Hello, my name is Corey Shaken. Adults are noticing more kids saying hello to each other and to adults and, wait, yeah, and to adults because of Start With Hello Week. As Isabel mentioned, Start With Hello Week is a week where we all say hello to each other in the hallways. Also, we had a wallpaper sign at the back of the school that says hello in all different languages. Adults are noticing more polite behavior because we are learning about kindness and bus safety in school assemblies. Adults are hearing kids use the language of the promise when they are, when they are trying to work out problems and give reminders.
Hi, my name is Alex. Kids are feeling inspired to be kind to others besides saying hello to more people. Kids are making a bigger effort to help one another. Kindness is catching. Kids are also trying to play with others and more than ever, kids go to the buddy bench to ask others to play or join a group. Students are trying to sit with a new person or play with a new group on Mix It Up Monday. Kids are thinking more about their actions besides putting kindness. We are also thinking more about our own actions and safety. For example, we are buckling up and listening better.
Thank you to our third grade girls.
I, I wanted to say what a great job you girls did with this presentation. I had a question for you and anybody can answer. How have some of these things you've been doing in school, like the West Orchard Promise, affected things at home with your siblings in particular? Isabel, you want to start? Do you have the microphone?
Okay. So, um, since we're learning about how to be kind and respectful to one another, that, um, the, the teachers taught us not to just be kind at school, but to be kind anywhere we go. And we took the message with us every other place that we go. So we make sure we can be kind, respectful anywhere we are, not just at school.
That's great.
Also, also when I see people being disrespectful to others outside of school, I tell them the West Orchard Promise. And I said, if someone's ever doing that to you again, um, you, you can do these, these steps. Stop, walk and talk. It's really impact not just our school, but all the surroundings.
That is such good advice.
That is excellent.
Thank you. Think about that too.
And thank all of you and thank Alyssa for just teaching and to be such wonderful, empathetic, terrific global citizens. And it's, it's a lesson for all of us. So thank you. You guys really made us smile.
So how did you all decide to wear the same shirt?
Well, we were, had a meeting with Ms. Stover and then we were, we were ending it. And then we just, yesterday, we just decided that we were going to wear our shirts.
It was great. Well, it shows good teamwork.
And you personalize them. We like it. It's all good. Thank you.
I just want to say, um, how proud I am of all the students who presented tonight. And I want to thank, um, Principal Scoog and Mrs. Stover for helping organize this evening for the Board of Education. Of course, your parents for allowing you to come out late. But I know it is a school night and snow seems to be coming in the afternoon. So we will be ready in the morning. So I want to wish you all a good night and thank you again for coming.
Thank you so much.
Oh, I'm sorry. Head on out. Well, could, could I just ask one quick question? Where are the boys? Yeah, where are the boys? Thank you, everybody.
All right, well, thank, thank you very much. We had a lot of excitement with all the children presenting, which is, sorry, uh, Jim Scoog, but I think the kids do a great job.
I just thought they were awesome. So before we begin our Smart Bond, uh, presentation, I'd like to invite our PTA President Jessica Katerine up to update the Board of Education on the Chapacua Reads/Chapacua Includes Initiative as we prepare for National Inclusive Week. So Jessica, please.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to say that we were so excited to have books starting to be distributed today at all of our schools. Teachers are getting the books that we have about 2,000 copies of El Defo going out to students across the district. Every family who would want the, uh, is, uh, being offered the book. And we're very excited to see this initiative get started. Um, we've been working on Chapacua Reads/Chapacua Includes all year. And I just wanted to take this opportunity now to update you as to the programs that have already been completed and the things that are coming up next. So the Chapacua Library did a wonderful story walk at, um, Kennedy Park with the Town of, the Town of Newcastle Rec. Department. Uh, the books have been distributed to faculty members, staff and students at this stage, including members of the community. Additional books are available at the Chapacua Library and at Scattered Books. It's also available at Google if you like digital reading, which some of our kids obviously do. Along with the, um, books, we gave every child a Chapacua Reads/Chapacua Includes bookmark. And the bookmark is part of an in-town initiative that we're encouraging. Uh, many of our local merchants, both here in Chapacua and in Millau, have agreed to host this CC somewhere in their store. And students, um, can go around and try and find CC at their local locations. And if they get eight, uh, CC finds from different locations, they can return to Scattered Books for a prize. So we want to thank Scattered Books for helping us sponsor that program. And, um, I've actually heard from a few merchants and some other stories that the kids are actually already looking for CC. So we're excited. Uh, we haven't told the students where they are, so they're going to have to work for it a little bit. So we'll see. Coming up in December, we have a handful of programs that we're doing with the Chapacua Central School District. We're excited to welcome Addict Udo. It's an off-road white play, a family musical about disability. It is coming to Roy Brook, Grathlin and West Orchard. We want to stay, we want to thank the Bus Department for helping us bus children around so that we can make sure that everyone gets to see this program. At the Middle School, we're, um, welcoming a youth ticks and threats program. It's a fantastic program where students who, who suffer, who face, who live with ticks and threats actually talk to kids, uh, peers about what it's like. It gives them an opportunity to see some of the struggles and have some empathy and understand how, um, ticks and threats, uh, affects students and, uh, what sort of challenges they face. The Chapacua Library is supporting us with Find Your Superpower. It is an arts and crafts project led by Robin Friedman of the Chapacua Children's Library. She's going to ask students to dig deep and find the superhero within themselves. They will then create shields and, um, and superhero logos. Here at Greeley, the Ambassador's Club is joining with the Chapacua PTA for a screening of Intelligent Lives, a film created by, um, Dan Habib, filmmaker and father of a child with disabilities and advocate for the rights of peoples with, people with disabilities. So we're excited to see that come in December. In late winter or early spring, Chapacua Children's Book Festival is hosting a graphic novel writing class. Students will have an opportunity to create their own graphic memoirs with a graphic artist. We think it's going to be Chris Aliopolous, so that will be very exciting. We're Skyping with author C.C. Bell with students. Um, that's brought to us by the Chapacua Children's Book Festival. Um, we intend that to be a fourth grade program. Um, as details of that gets out and out, we will let you know. At the library, the third, fourth grade book club, um, is featuring El Defo as their club selection for January. And Mercy Galerlin will lead students in an in-depth discussion of the book. He will give children an opportunity to get a book from a different perspective with the leadership of the library. We are, throughout the schools, teachers in many different grades and classes have been very supportive of the program. They've been working together to gather good ideas and best practices. And they are all working with Ms. Kaiser Edelman to create a teacher's guide to, um, teaching El Defo in our classrooms. So we're really excited to see what sorts of initiatives they'll come up with and how the book will affect students in different grades and different classrooms. So we're very excited for that. Um, I also received from Mrs. Paradiso, the Grathlin Librarian, a great video that I would love to share with you. So this was a video that was created by two students. It's, um, it is also a memoirish in that it's based on a true story.
Hi there. I'm looking for a good book. Have any ideas?
Well, there is this amazing book that I read over the summer called El Defo. It's my favorite book in the whole world. It's so much fun to read.
What's it about?
Well, I don't want to spoil it. That would be no fun. So I'll tell you this. I almost crashed reading it on a bike.
You can read it on a bike?
Well, you shouldn't, but I couldn't put it down.
All right, I'll give it a shot. And if you guys want to try El Defo, this book is coming your way from the Chapacua PTA this November.
All right. Um, we're going to finish up the year by asking any families who would like to donate their books. Um, we'll collect them, we'll enter them and share them with, um, other school districts to encourage them to lead their own reprogram, um, across foster. So, uh, lots of great initiatives and we're really excited. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. We're so happy to partner with the PTA on this important initiative. And maybe we'll reach out to those parents and see if we can share that on our social media sites.
I mean, I like Jessica, that you're, it's not just one, it's a broad scope across the entire community. And that the community, the merchants are also being involved, which is sort of great.
Rotary Club have also been very supportive of the initiative.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. Okay, Josh, we, I'd like to introduce our Director of Innovation and Technology, Josh Black. He'll share with you the second phase of our Smart Bond application process. And Josh, I just would like to note that as the fourth graders were presenting, you were beaming like a proud parent in the audience.
I was. I did not coach them or.
I know. It was like a surprise for you.
It was a surprise.
To see you watch, um, all of your hard work.
The work that we're doing.
In action. It was, it was really nice to see that.
Yeah, it's really great to see the work that we're doing in our classrooms come to life here. Um, so I'm here, I'm going to be thorough but brief. Um, here to present a supplemental submission to the, um, New York State Smart Bond. So just a quick review. The Smart Schools Bond Act was passed in 2014-15. Um, it was budget improved by voters statewide and an allocation of $2 billion went out to schools for educational technology and infrastructure to improve learning opportunities throughout the state. The purpose was to install high-speed broadband or wireless connectivity to, um, our schools, acquire learning technologies, construct enhanced and modernized facilities, um, as well as install high-tech security features in schools. Our allocation, which was based on the Formula Eight from 2014 school year, was, uh, $686,946. We submitted our initial, um, proposal to the state that was approved and is being enacted now. 151,000 of it for high-tech security and, um, $302,075 for instructional technology, which was our tablet computers for fifth and sixth grade students, as well as Wi-Fi access points throughout the school district. So our philosophy of getting our approval passed by the state, um, I, I say is by Edgar Dijkstra, which is basically just simplicity and just keep everything as simple as possible. Um, and send up to New York State, to Albany, the most simple bond proposal as we possibly can so that it takes them two seconds to read it without thinking and just say, "Check, we approved Chapacua's submission." Um, and Edgar Dijkstra, just a little computer science for everybody, is someone who talked about, um, being simple and shortest path algorithms to getting to an endpoint.
I still think we're overestimating him, but.
We might be. Um, I, I've talked about our three digital learning goals. I've talked about our three digital learning goals. Everything that we do with technology and as you saw from our third and fourth graders, exemplifies exactly what we believe in our school district around digital learning. Um, so we're proposing our supplemental, um, proposal for iPads in our second graders. So you saw the impact that it had on third and fourth graders. To keep with our plan of having all students have access to technology and readily available for our active learning environments, um, the next phase is, um, doing a full-scale implementation in second grade. We've now, uh, tried and tested everything in third and fourth grade. We know that it works. We know that our networks can sustain it. We know that, um, our professional development model is in place for our teachers and for our support staff. Um, so this is our, our, our next phase. Um, and just sort of reviewing the math, they allocated us, and this is sort of like checking my math also. Um, they allocated us 686,000, our initial submission of 302,75 for fifth and sixth grade tablets. Um, security for 151,000. That leaves us with 233,871 that we need to send up to the state for the supplemental submission. Um, and as we've seen before, our one-to-one plan, this gives us the, we're doing the planning now in 1819 to implement next school year. Um, the approval process, just quickly review. I underline the last of it, which is that we come to a board meeting, regularly convened board meeting, and present what we're planning on doing with it, um, for, for a comment before we give our final seal of approval. up for reimbursement the exact dollar amount that we've spent that was in the plan. And then they have stated they will reimburse up to what our plan was submitted.
So we don't know yet if they will actually, you know, send a check for the exact amount? I mean, usually when they...
They will reimburse the full amount. The reason is because the bond was approved by the voters, so they have permission to borrow, to borrow $2 billion. And so every quarter, they will go out to borrow whatever the submit will add up to be.
Okay, because they notoriously never send us up to the full amount that they promised to send us. But you're saying this is different because it's a bond, legally they're presumably...
There's a legal piece here. And also, this is something that we had to foot the bill first, and then we asked for reimbursement.
We do that anyway, right?
But that's not an unusual scenario. But I hope that it works this time. Also, is there a sort of mandated allocation between technology and security? I know that some part of the Smart School Bonds Act was for security, and I forget the percentage, but...
No, we did the allocation. So we thought that 151,000 was the correct amount for safety.
Right.
And so the rest went to technology.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you, everybody.
David Dijkstra's algorithm for the presentation, too.
Thank you, Josh.
We love that. Thank you for making it very easy to understand.
So I just have a few more items.
It's the same thing with the board.
Exactly. Keep it right. You're using that with us as well. Algorithm's working.
Okay, so a couple more things. We were notified by the town that they would like to restructure our facilities use contracts, so I think we need to talk about that. So I'm going to recommend we meet the week after Thanksgiving to discuss how to move forward based on their recent communication to me regarding this issue. So if acceptable with the Board of Education, I'll have Lisa begin to work on scheduling that meeting around everyone's schedule.
Yes, fine.
Okay, great. So we now know that Whole Foods, we think, will open around the second week of December.
December 12.
December 12, so they say.
Yep, that's what they're saying. So I think what we need to do is defer the report to the Board of Education that was scheduled for January on whether or not we need to make some adjustments to our security. Remember, we're supposed to have a long-term security task force for Greeley, but we haven't really been able to see the impact of Whole Foods on anything as of yet.
Right, we've been waiting for that.
So I'm gonna suggest that probably, maybe at the end of February, we convene that committee, and then we report to the Board in May if we need to make any adjustments to our current practices. Is everyone okay with that?
Yes.
Yes.
Turn the module we made every week for budget.
That would be great. Plenty of time. So we have a fantastic, we had a fantastic superintendent's conference day that Warren had mentioned with Dr. Mark Brackett that focused on social emotional learning because his ruler approach is something that we're working to implement throughout the district, K through 12. I'd like to thank our PTA for attending, and I'd also like to thank Adam, the PD team, and all of our presenters, some of which were community members, for a tremendous day of learning. It's always helpful when we can learn from each other, but it's even more beneficial when we can have experts in the field come in and share their expertise with us as we look to support their children. So I'd like to thank Adam and his team. And I know many of our board members were able to attend that day, and if they weren't able to attend that day, they were able to attend another session with Dr. Brackett to learn about his practices. So I think we're headed in the right direction as we continue to address one of our target areas in our strategic plan, which is to align our K through 12 social emotional program.
Was that taped or not?
We didn't have a question. No, it was not taped.
It was taped, not the one here, but the one I attended at the Bosse's was taped. It's definitely your one.
I could share this, he will come back to meet with our elementary faculty because there were some who were involved in conferences. So we can tape that, and also, we've discussed about having him present to the parents in September or in the fall at some point. So we'll be able to do something, I think, around taping him and sharing it out with the wider of the audience.
It was excellent.
It was great.
Yep.
So very lucky we were able to bring him here.
So if you want to go right away, PNW Bosse's website will have a version.
And I guess it's, if I don't get to say it, I just want to wish everyone a very happy Thanksgiving. So thank you. Okay, that's all.
Okay. Committee reports. I know we're gonna be talking about policy in a couple minutes after public comment, so we had a policy committee meeting about a week and a half ago. Any other committee reports?
We had a communications committee meeting on November 8th where we went over, again, our logo, which we're very happy with. I think it looks terrific. We had talked about changes that Dr. Ackerman made to the, you know, highlights and what's going out to the district and how to push out our information. He made a change in the most recent issue that went out, which we thought was really good in terms of allowing people, you know, just a different format, allowing people to see updates, a couple of sentences in a click here, so people could learn further. And we just think that's a better way of pushing out some communications to the community. And we've also been talking about how to do, how to represent in all our classrooms the concepts behind our strategic planning, and we're still working on that in terms of a push out on, you know, what we want the portrait of our graduate to be and how people understand how we plan to get there, so.
Yeah, and it would be great to get feedback from the community, maybe through the PTA or any other means on these new methods of communication, since we're communicating with you, so it would be good to have a little bit of back and forth, you know, after enough time has elapsed where you see, you know, what's working. Okay.
Anything else? The Facilities Committee turns out in a quirk of timing, meets tomorrow. 5:45 is the public session, so we have nothing to report. I'm sure you're planning to report, but not at this time. I don't know yet.
I'm not even sure you're gonna have your meeting, based on the weather.
Yeah, Will wants to say.
Oh, Weather Facilities Committee.
You got trucks, you'll make it there.
Charlie, blow us out.
We'll shovel snow.
Okay, so we'll move on to public comment period. So we welcome public comment. It's a comment period, not a question and answer period. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes and to respect each other's time, and board members can be contacted by email or by phone number. Is there anyone who likes... Judy, we missed you. So, whoa. Please state your name, Judy.
Two and a half years ago, the school administration and school board presented to the community a capital bond proposal for 42 and a half million dollars. Here's the proposal. In the proposed, in the proposal, projects were identified, each with a cost attached. Also, funding was described as being tax levying neutral by including the sale of school district property and the use of fund balance, reserves, and capital expense. The bond passed and work commenced. Unfortunately, since the bond was passed, the school administration and school board have taken no initiative to report back to the community about what the true costs of the proposed projects are versus what was presented in the proposal. In addition, there's been no report about what changes have been made to the projects versus what was presented to the community in the bond proposal. Last year, there was a discussion scheduled at one of the school board meetings, but the agenda was changed and the topic was never rescheduled. At school board meetings, there are often approvals given for change orders for the projects, but these are individual items, and there's been no attempt to present an overall picture of project changes and the impacts of those changes on not only costs but on programs. There's also no information about this on the school district website. This communicate, lack of communication and transparency to the community gives the impression that once the school administration and school board had bond, fund approval, they did not think that they have an obligation to report back to the community about project changes and true costs, only when necessary, like the vote needed on the change of location in the turf field at Bell. In addition, regarding the additional funding, $7 million was anticipated from the sale of school district property. Has this been realized? If the amount is short of this number, then where is the difference coming from? Fund balance was also identified as a source of funds. Is there any plans to use fund balance this year, especially because I believe the first payment is due this December? Where are the funds coming from to make that payment? I ask, in the interest of transparency and good stewardship of the funds that the community has entrusted to you, that the school administration and school board, that you give an update to the community about the status of all projects covered by the bond. What changes were made or will be made to those projects versus how they were presented at the bond meetings? Did any of these changes impact programs? What are the true costs of the projects versus what was presented at the same bond meetings? What is the status for source of funds, real estate sales, and the use of fund balance? Finally, I ask that all this information be placed on the school district website and updated as additional changes are made. And I'm gonna give you a copy of my statement. I realize more than happy you weren't here when the bond was sent, but...
Thank you, Judy. Thank you, Judy.
Thanks for typing out.
Great, because I was taking a lot of notes. Too far.
Thank you so much.
Are there any other comments from the community? Okay, public comment period is closed. Can I have a motion to accept item 3.1, except minutes of October 30th, or do you?
I'll move item 3.1. I second.
Any discussion? All in favor? All right. Isn't it important where the board members can speak about something? Oh, yeah. I'm sorry, we can go back.
Yeah, actually, if we could, I'd like to maybe have a little bit of discussion.
Sure.
Related to...
Can we just vote on item 3.1 first? Whatever you want, hit the press. Can I have a vote on item 3.1? Approval 3.1?
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
Okay. So we can go back now. Well, I fully appreciate this piece of paper from Judy. As I mentioned before, I'd like to add additional information on what I said about tomorrow's Facilities Committee meeting. I've opened up the agenda, 5:45. Number one on the list is a project update and project completion date, including the elementary schools, the middle schools, the high school, the Global Learning Center, STEAM Center, the L Building upper floor, the L Building lower floor, K-110, infrastructure, the public library, as well as the fields. And I'd also like to point out that on December 4th, we will be holding our, the town planning board will be holding a public hearing for us on our property, what we refer to as Zara Property, which is expected to bring money towards that $7 million referred to. So we are moving along with that. But the reason there was no report today is because we have our meeting tomorrow. Snow will...
No, you said exactly what I was hoping you'd say.
Okay. Do you want me to go to the comments room, or...
No, thanks for filling us in on what the subject is next to my...
Also, what it's worth, school safety is number two, facilities use is number three, and other projects, including the Zara Property. And all the other projects are on the agenda, so if you can see this tape before 5:45 on November 15th, and you have an inkling to come, we'll be in the air center. Love to see it. In the basement? I don't know, it was in the basement?
No, we're gonna try to do it on the first floor. Because we're not gonna use any electronic.
Okay, first floor, great.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thanks, Jeffrey. All right, item 3.2, this is the first reading of the policy 1005, public participation at board meetings. So Vicki and I, and Christine, and Margo, may our attorney, had worked on this, and I'll let Vicki take us through it.
Okay, we just added one paragraph on the second page, the second to last bullet point, which says, "After the public comment period has been completed, board members may have a discussion among themselves regarding comments presented." And that was suggested by our attorney because if we don't have that as part of the policy, then we would be making comments and talking about topics that are not on the agenda, and that would violate the notice provision of school board meetings. And therefore, he thought it was important to state that in the policy. I don't know that we have to state it on the public agenda.
Well, if it's policy, it should be...
It's not necessary. Obviously, we don't put this entire policy on the agenda. So it's not necessary, really, but that just has to be part of the policy in order to have a discussion.
I think it's helpful, though, for the, for the community to know because we are adding something, because sometimes things get raised, even though the public comment is that, it's a comment, and it's not a Q and A, there are sometimes things that we want to discuss amongst ourselves after a board meeting, so I think it's good to know. And that's, that's our choice, whether we decide to...
Well, not at a board meeting, but after a comment.
I mean, after the comments, during the board meeting, excuse me. So, and that is, again, it's, we may do that. We may choose to, to speak with each other about something or not, and I, but I just think in terms of clarity, I personally believe it's helpful to perhaps add that to the agenda so people know that there's a possibility that we may engage in a discussion at some point.
Or just like as Jeffrey and Holly added, because we have a facilities committee meeting until tomorrow, this is a sort of way to tie up, like a loose end that we had heard of. The one thing, I like that. The one thing I think we also would discuss was the time limit, three minutes, four minutes, five minutes. It seems like each time we have comment, a lot of times, person will come up to three, and we'll say, "We'll give you an extra minute." So maybe we should just go with four or five and be done with that.
I would, I would support increasing it to probably right up to five because the volume of comments is not so large that we couldn't, you know, allow an extra two minutes, and then it saves us the vote of whether or not to add the time, which we're likely to do anyways.
We can ask maybe Lisa, since she's the keeper of all time, maybe at four minutes, you can say you have one more minute left.
I have a slightly different view of that. I think that this policy is meant to cover any, any event in the public comment time period. So there may be times when we have many, many people come to speak. Sometimes we have, you know, more than 20 people come to speak.
Like the entire wrestling team.
So, you know, we want this to apply to every situation, and I think that in those cases, three minutes is reasonable.
I'd argue that we actually probably would be more efficient by increasing it to five for cases like that, instead of having to handle a request for an additional minute from a large volume of people.
Well, if we have a large, because it's discretionary, if we have a large volume of people, we may decide to, to not allow going beyond the five minutes. I mean, sometimes, you know, it could make a board meeting last an extra two hours or so. And so I think that, I would, if everyone wants to change it to five, I don't have a problem with that. I would prefer to leave it at three, given the, and give the option to extend.
I wonder if you change it to five, if you would be extending it to six minutes?
Right.
I just, it's just I'm wondering. I don't...
I prefer, I prefer the five-minute limit. I don't see any, we're supposed to be transparent, responsive to the community, if the board meeting takes an extra hour because, I'm trying to do my math, enough people come and speak, you know, 12 people come and speak, and I'm okay with that.
I just think that, you know, this...
So I like to, so I think that it should be five minutes. I don't think there's, you know, putting a limit on it. And if somebody really needs to speak more than that, and they're not repeating or whatever, we can always make a decision at that point.
I'm a big proponent of best practices, and there are differing opinions on this. Just recently, when I did attend the communications workshop in New York, the, you know, it's an informal poll of people sitting near me or talking with, a lot, a lot of school districts have a three-minute limit. And there are some that have four, and there are some that have five. It's not unusual to have a three-minute limit. I think that I'm, I'm in line to agree with, with Christine, there, it's, three to four minutes is a long period of time. Even the people that had said to me that they have a five-minute limit, they said it's, it's long to speak for five minutes, and, and I think that we have handled it quite well recently, that we, we are respectful of everyone, we want, we want to hear people's comments, we have talked about other ways to make ourselves available to the community. I'm generally in favor of staying with the three minutes, but I'm willing to discuss it further. I just think that, I think we should come up with a rule that we're comfortable with, and I think that in most times that that, that does work. So that's my two cents for now.
It's not unusual to have a three-minute limit. I think that I'm in line to agree with Christine. Three to four minutes is a long period of time. Even the people that had said to me that they have a five-minute limit, they said it's long to speak for five minutes, and I think that we have handled it quite well recently, that we are respectful of everyone, we want to hear people's comments, we have talked about other ways to make ourselves available to the community. I'm generally in favor of staying with the three minutes, but I'm willing to discuss it further. I just think that, I think we should come up with a rule that we're comfortable with, and I think that in most times that that does work. So, that's my two cents for now.
Okay. And we can discuss the time going forward. I think that adding this to the policy makes sense, though.
Yes, I think this addition is helpful. We had all talked about the fact of trying to be responsive, because sometimes we want to be able to talk as a board about an issue that was raised, that we can just make some decisions whether it's something we want to discuss further, and I think that gives us an opportunity to do that. So, I'm in favor of adding that.
So, we're taking the time issue off the table for this meeting?
It's not in this reading.
It's not in this reading.
It's not in this policy. It's not in the first reading.
Okay. I just brought that up because I thought someone had mentioned that at the last meeting or...
It was mentioned several times. But this goes toward what can go on the agenda, but let's skip that for now. The other thing that, I kind of recall a policy previously, and I think goes in this policy, and it came up just now, was that somewhere in our policies, you used to say that you're not supposed to hand stuff to board members during the board meeting. You hand it to the district clerk, who's supposed to hand it to people. And I don't know what happened to that part in the policy. I don't know if it's even in this policy or what policy it is.
I don't remember seeing that, but it might be.
But I think we ought to consider adding that.
Kind of wants the first reading, so we can add it.
Yep. So, this is the first reading, so we can talk about adding, would you like, I guess, would you like the policy committee, Jeff, Holly, and Jane, to look at the time limit again and to add the presentations?
I think we should discuss it publicly and vote on it. I'll make a motion, Holly can make a motion to change it to five minutes, and at some point, we'll vote on it.
So, I think we should decide whether people want us...
To add this for the second reading?
To add the time limit as an issue to be discussed for the second.
And then we can go at the second reading.
For the second reading.
I would like...
I do.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, we'll discuss, okay.
We'll put that in.
And as for handing things out, I mean, do we have, I mean, I don't think we have to put every single thing in a policy. We could just tell the person to hand...
Right.
The thing out to the district clerk.
I think that's how it's been done, whether Judy realizes that or not. I think that's, I think we can announce that perhaps at the beginning of our public comments, so that it's just for easy dissemination. We can figure that out.
We can add that into our, into the initial public comment. Any handouts, please, just give to the district clerk.
Yeah, for distribution. Well, we can work then.
Item 3.3, this is the first reading of policy 202, board protocols. So, we were talking about different protocols, we had a retreat, and it's not really policy, but the policy committee decided we would at least take a stab at what protocols might look like and what we can go with it, and we would talk about that.
It can be a policy, so that's something else to discuss, whether it should be a policy or whether it should just be like freestanding protocols. I just have a few, you know, typos and some grammatical changes, because we didn't get a chance to see this on the redraft after our meeting. So, but I guess we would hear comments from the board.
All right.
Yeah.
Do you want us to read it, or have you read this through already?
Do we have it?
Yeah, are you saying that what I pulled off is something different in the notebook? I thought I had...
No, I think it should be the same, nothing's changed.
There are a couple typos and things like that in there that have to be changed.
I still would like clarification when we go back, whether this should actually be a policy or a protocol. To me, if it's a protocol, it shouldn't be part of our policy, and if we want to review it on an annual basis and see if there's things that we need to add, I don't think that should necessarily go to the policy committee.
It's protocol, it's protocols that are part of, that we...
Well, I think, I think we, as a policy committee, decided we would take a stab, you know, we said we wanted to look at protocols, so I think we took a stab at putting protocols up so we could discuss them.
Right.
It doesn't have to be a policy, but it could just be protocols, where we just try to start the discussion.
Right, and I do think, absolutely, because we've been, we've been in favor of doing that. That is a typical board practice in most districts, to have a list of board and superintendent protocols.
So, the advantage to having it as a policy, from my point of view, is that it's easily found, rather than being free-floating somewhere on the website.
It could still be under our Board of Education, like just as Board of Education protocols.
Yeah, I would be in favor of not having it codified as a policy.
As a policy.
But let it be something that's...
I don't think it should be a policy.
I don't either. I think it should be a separate Board of Education protocols and just listed under a Board of Education tab. That's my personal opinion.
So, we have a policy tab and we have a protocol tab.
Yeah, like we can, we can have a separate...
Okay, well, you know, there's no, there's no rule one way or the other, so...
Again, we wanted to have this discussion open, and but we just took a stab at saying this is what we thought might be...
And, 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 right, no, we did, yes. We've been wanting to do that, so I'm very happy that we did that. In line with Jeff's thing, I still feel like we're not under agenda setting, we're not addressing the issue of board members getting something on the agenda, and I think that has to be addressed.
It's something I actually asked to have on this meeting.
Yeah.
It was a perfect example. Didn't get on it.
So, I think that needs to go back to the policy committee and to speak with our attorneys and get clarification, since I know some of us have requested clarification on how to actually put something on there.
Do you want that to be a policy or a protocol?
It's already a policy.
Agenda setting here is under the protocol section.
There's agenda setting in policy 2000.
Right, so, the reason that Margot had shaped this as a policy was because this was going to supersede the other language, right? So, whatever we do here, we have to change in the policy that addresses agenda setting, or whatever we do in the policy, we need to change to the protocol. But in the end, Margot recommended, whether it's a policy or a protocol, you all agree on it by vote, right?
See, there's a policy on board practice, so then we would have a policy and we would have a set of separate protocols. And in order to avoid confusion, you know, that was one of the reasons why I would think the protocols should be part of our policy. I mean, so I don't really understand, and I'm fine leaving it as protocols if none of you want that, but I just don't really understand what the negatives are in your view of having this be part of policy. I think it would be less confusing, because we do have, there is policy that relates to board procedure and practice. So, if you have it all in one place as one policy, I think it leaves less chance for confusion and discrepancy. So, what are the downsides of having it be part of the policy?
I would argue that we should change the policies that have that and move them into protocols.
So, then we'd have no policy regarding board...
Policy would be see the protocols.
Board procedures?
See the protocols, if that's what you need, a policy for board procedures. But I thought that that's the way the board works, that there are protocols.
You know, it's interesting, because there seem to be...
I don't see the reasoning behind that.
Well, there seem to be, it's interesting to me, because I know we've had, we've had prior discussions about not doing things that, having too many policies that can constrict us, and to me, there's a difference between protocols, between practice and policy. So, I personally would look at it, that if there's something in here on agenda setting, that should be a policy, how to set an agenda for that, but then protocols on what's under here. But that's me from a legal perspective. But I think also, in terms of, I think it's, you know, if we want to review our protocols or things that change, whether it's communication or how we function and certain things with public comment, I think that our functionality, just as a board, should be maybe easier to make adjustments to than as a policy, that that's, that's just my view.
Well, there's a, there's a structure to changing policy, and, you know, so I think if we change our protocols, I think it should be done with enough notice and time for discussion and reflection, and it would be subject to our two-reading rule, and I think that everyone would then get a chance to weigh in and, you know, not have the protocols changed too easily.
No, I wouldn't want that, either.
So that, so that everyone could get a chance to be part of the discussion and thought process.
How do you change a protocol?
Right, and I, you know, yeah, I feel like I need a little more information, because, you know, when, I think, as new board members, Holly and I looked into this in terms of having protocols, because a lot of districts had them, and we had not enacted some in quite some time, and so we felt it was important just to have it somewhat codified, and especially when there's changeover and new board members, et cetera.
I, yeah, so as I've been coming on board, one of the things that I have been consistently told to refer to are the board's protocols, and without them, it's, it is less what is in policy, what I'm looking for to answer those questions, it's more of how do we...
How do you be a board member?
Who do I talk to when this happens, and what are the interaction models? And I think that that's less of policy and more of how we've agreed on our norms.
Oh, right, so that's not in the protocols, those kinds of things like...
A lot of it, no, it really is.
It is, it is.
Or do you mean a misunderstanding what you meant by, when you said, "Who do I talk to?"
Um, let me enter another...
Okay, no, I know what's in here, okay.
Outlining like the board members authority versus...
For the community, you mean?
Right.
All right, how about, can we think about doing this? So, it sounds to me like board member roles, superintendent roles, communication, confidentiality, parents and staff, complaints, and media contact fit under protocol, agenda setting fits under policy.
I think there's, my opinion is that there is an agenda setting piece that belongs in here, but there's a policy that we need to clarify.
On getting items on the agenda.
I guess I, I hear the bifurcation. I don't understand the reasoning behind it and why all of this should not be in one place.
It's just different to the opinion.
You can say they can be in two places, but usually, when you do something like that, there's a reason behind it. I'm not getting a clear, a clear understanding.
So, we default, so we just stick to anything in policy?
I'm not getting a clear understanding of the bifurcation and what makes something be part of one group as opposed to a second group. I don't see the reasoning behind that.
The policies, I think, are really saying what we, what we have to do and where the hard lines are, but I think some of the things are a little bit more fluid about, you know, whether or not it's appropriate for me to just tell you something that I have read and not share it broadly, and those are things that are, things that are understood and that you can get through conversations, but we're not going to have, I don't think we would have a policy that would say everybody forwards everything out. It's like documenting a norm.
Is there an enforcement differential between a policy and a protocol?
I don't know.
I think there is.
So, when I think of protocols, I think about how we're operating, and when I think of policies, I feel, I feel like it applies to how the district's operating, right? So, maybe what we can do is we can, the policy committee, since this is where the protocol discussion began, we can take your feedback and come back again at our next meeting, but in the meantime, if you have specific feedback for each of these sections, if you could email it to us so we can discuss it.
Yeah, I, right, I have a couple of things, right.
Because what...
In general, I think many of these are very helpful in terms of practice and procedure. There might be some that I would like to add that I've seen on other board protocols from other districts, and we can certainly email you those if we feel that we'd like, maybe something's missing.
Because I'm hearing there's at least three of you that feel we need to have protocols, so we should move forward with protocols.
Yes.
I think we all agree that we should have, we should have protocols.
We need protocols, we're trying to understand where the line stands.
Right, because we have new board members, and I think it's helpful. And I have to say, I mean, not to, not to belabor this issue, but I don't see a difference between having rules that the district should follow and rules that the board should follow, because the board operations are part of the district.
I just think there's a basic difference between policy and protocol, we just may have a disagreement on what belongs in the categories.
All right, so just in terms of moving forward, if you could read these categories, send this information to us, so then we can sit down and look at it, and then have something to come back with on December 5th, and then we'll also have the agenda setting policy on that agenda as well, to talk about that piece about how board members can put items on the agenda.
Okay.
Good?
Yep, works for me.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
No problem.
We did item 4.1. Thank you, Joe, for becoming our principal.
Oh, my gosh, oh, so, just as a follow-up, we'll send out our press release tomorrow morning, but I've already met with the Seven Bridges faculty, so ready to welcome him on board, so...
What was, what's his actual start date? I forget.
December 10th, right.
And then our current interim principal will stay on through, till the holiday. So, two weeks of overlap to get, for good transition time between the both of them, but also give them some time to do entry interviews.
And when does Nicole start?
November 26th. She starts the Monday after Thanksgiving, and she will also have two weeks of overlap with the interim assistant.
Great.
And then so she'll have a couple, we'll have some overlap.
And then the new team will be fully functioning when we get back from, on the new year.
Excellent.
All right, so...
Thank you for doing that, that work in a very short period of time.
Thank you, Tony.
Short, but very thorough and well-executed.
Extremely, extremely thorough process that you guys went through, so thank you.
I would say that was thorough, and we did a lot of work collaboratively, everyone from John to Adam to Christine to teachers, and the search room is great. Debbie raises really partner nicely with us and gives a lot of insights and perspectives.
And like I said, during that one interview where he met with 15 people, and we had two students from Seven Bridges, I think they're seventh graders, they were...
They were incredible, really. I thought they were even younger than seventh grade. They were unbelievably, like, focused and on top of their stuff.
And you should know that I saw them subsequent to that day, and one of them was like, in class, I happened to walk into the room, and she was like, and leaned down, she's like, "So many decisions?" Not yet, working on it.
They were great, very impressive.
You should bring them by and...
Yeah, definitely.
Taking your recommendation under consideration.
They, I want, I mean, there were at least three different times that they said things that were before anyone else in the room that were exactly what everyone...
Everyone was thinking, and they actually said it, right?
I thought was interesting was the one student took, I remember if the one, one of the candidates, I think he took three two-sided pages of notes.
Yes.
He was there, like, writing the entire time, and then, and then, you know...
Really impressive.
And the, I thought all three candidates at the end, they engaged the students also, which was great, because I think that's what we want to say.
Great, thank you for your support.
All right.
Okay, so, I recommend 4.2, non-instructional as presented.
Do I have a...
I move 4.2.
Thank you. I'll second 4.2. Any discussion? No, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so, I just would like to share, we're making some adjustments to our head custodians, so the buildings impacted will send emails out to our families in the morning, just to share with them who will be their new custodian moving forward, so we look forward to welcoming our, we all have the same staff, we're just putting people in different roles, and we look forward to welcoming our, our head custodians in their new roles in the district, so...
Okay, great.
Wonderful.
Great.
All right, do I have a recommendation on 5.1?
I'll move 5.1.
Do I have a second for 5.1?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
CSC, that was CSC summaries. I'd like to take 5.2, 5.3, 5.4, and 5.5 together. These are all special education services, one's with Greenberg, one's with Tarrytown, actually, two with Tarrytown, and one is with Irvington. Do I have a motion for 5, 2, 3, or 5 together?
5.5 is not special ed. It's health and service.
Okay, we'll take, thank you, Brian, so I take that off, do I have a motion for 5.2, 5.3, and 5.4 together?
I'll move 5, 2, 3, and 4.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
5.5, the result, the Board of Education approves an agreement for health and welfare services with Irvington Union Free School District for one student, at the rate of $1,207.32 per student for the 18, 19 school year, authorizes the board president and superintendent to get the agreement. I will move 5.5. Do I have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Do I have, can I have a motion for 5.6? The Board of Education approves a proposal for HVAC controls at Bell Middle School with Johnson Controls, the amount of $125,320.
I'll move 5.
And it's anticipated the district to receive a credit and bond construction project at Bell Middle School for approximately $80,000 from Framing Mechanical. Do I have a motion?
I can move it now. I move 5.6.
Do I have a second on 5.6?
Yeah, I'll second 5.6.
Any discussion? I'll back Holly, yep.
Can I get an explanation of the credit?
Excuse me?
Can you explain the credit to the bond?
Yes, I have a question as well. We had to switch providers or et cetera.
This is, when we bid it out, this is part of the bond. And, but our system is really all done by Johnson Controls. So at the end, we thought it's best for Johnson Controls to do it. And in reality, Framing probably cannot do this anyway, so.
Okay, thank you.
But it's costing us $45,000 more than we anticipated?
Yeah.
$45,230.
What about you to know where we're getting at?
Okay. Can I have a, can we have a vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I have a motion for 5.7? Be resolved, the Board of Education approves an extension of vendor contract to provide meals and/or snacks between Westchester Community Opportunity Program, Westcop Head Start, and vendor CCSD effective September 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2019, for attached prices and authorizes the board president to execute this agreement. I will move 5.7.
I'll second 5.7.
Any discussion?
I have one question. There's a couple of places in the supplemental documents where it says Mount Kisco Head Start. Is that just for illustrative purposes?
That's where they started, and therefore they still call them Mount Kisco.
Okay.
This, this program used to be with...
So it kind of operates under two names?
Right.
Okay.
It's in a, it's somewhere on the outside of the graph one? It's, yeah.
Yeah, your own district office.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to understand why something said Mount Kisco.
So, so just for information background, this, this program used to be under Neighbor's Link, and that's why they were at Mount Kisco. And, but Neighbor's Link was expanding, so they negotiated space here, but they're still part of the Mount Kisco program.
Okay.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.